Mayor Williams.
I'm here.
Councilmember Grimes.
Here.
Councilmember Mayo.
President.
Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Schultz.
We're expecting the other three shortly. First thing on our agenda this evening is a presentation from the Emergency Preparedness Committee, and I believe Jennifer Kertinitis is here, and if you want to tell us what we need to know. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you for having us. I'm also joined by Ron Hardy, who is our new-ish, since he's been here a couple of months now, City Emergency Preparedness Manager. I think I've called him all sorts of different names about emergency manager and whatnot, but, so that's his official title. Before we jump into things, I did want to say, from our committee, we just wanted to acknowledge Kay's support and, how do I even say it, love of emergency management over the years. She was such a big proponent of our committee, and unfortunately, I wasn't able to be at the memorial to share it there, and I just wanted to mention it here. And we certainly miss her and appreciated all of the work she did when she was with us on the committee and afterwards as a council member. So tonight, we have two things. One, we have our biannual report, and the other thing I was meant to check with Jesse, and I didn't have a chance to, was the, I guess, the update of the city code, and I don't know if we do both of those now, or if we do the reading later. I just wanted to see.
What's the disposition of the citizens?
The code as it relates to the Emergency Preparedness Committee, we've suggested some updates, and I submitted that.
We just want to introduce the issue of just sort of.
Sure, we made some updates to make the code more in line with what we've actually been doing. It was, I want to say, at least, you know, it'd have been four or five years since the code had been written, and we've done some different things since, not incredibly different, but just trying to make it more in line so that when we do these reports, we can literally walk through the code and say, this is what we're doing towards that, this is what we plan to do, and so just a couple of updates along those lines. You're welcome. So we will be walking through that, and to start us off, Ron is going to talk about the work that he's been doing so far.
In the few months I've been here, I've attended three meetings with the Emergency Preparedness Committee and found them very insightful and helpful. I've currently pushed out to them some drafts of the all-hazards plans, which were basically what city employees need to do during certain types of emergencies, evacuations, to get their input and feedback on that, as well as some of the directors. Also pushed out to them a PowerPoint training presentation to get their feedback on that, that we hope to discuss at the next meeting. Starting to get more into the outreach, I've been invited to the next seniors' meeting on the 25th of this month to do a short presentation on preparedness for seniors. So we're pushing out some of the things that we're responsible for right now.
The committee is very excited to have Ron, because there are a lot of things that he's starting to work on that we are looking forward to participating in. So the next kind of area that we've discussed a little as a committee was the formation of volunteer neighborhood teams that can assist the city departments in carrying out emergency activities. This is something we've discussed a little bit, but haven't really taken the discussion as far as we could go, and something we're going to look into a little bit in 2014. Kind of the big focus of our energy over the past year was a lot of outreach. We were at just about all of the city festivals, with the exception of the Jazz Festival, handed out a lot of preparedness handouts, had support from Montgomery County Office of Emergency Management, they provided us with those handouts, and along with recyclable bags, just to help get the word out. We also engaged in a number of activities during Preparedness Month. One was the proclamation by the council. We run our public service announcements on Tacoma Cable, and we've updated our committee website with links to the PSAs, and we've put on some more information about connecting our website to the county website, which has a lot of links on preparedness information. As far as outreach in general, the committee is looking to do some more strategic thinking about how we want to do it and where. You know, the fairs are always a great opportunity, but we have a lot of other resources, ways we, I'm sure there are ways we can work with the council to get out the word better, more, and reach more folks. One thing that we've talked about is looking at ways to collect data on, one is on events, so we've certainly, after the water shortage issue, potential water shortage issue last July, and the Navy Yard shooting in September, as a committee, we discuss these issues, we discuss any impacts they've had on the city, and so we're still looking for ways that we can share that information. We do, because we have members of fire, police, the hospital, and Washington Adventist University on the committee, you know, it's a great way that we can all come together and share that information, but who else should be seeing this that may not be seeing it, and how can we get more input from citizens? Those are a couple of things we're looking at for 2014. We are continuing to promote information on the Citizens Emergency Response Team training, and also looking at other areas, other types of citizen training that we can promote within And again, we're just kind of continuing our strategic planning as far as ways that the committee can help the city be prepared, and a lot of that will be through Ron and a lot of the work he's doing, such as a number of exercises.
Some of the exercises I have planned after the city manager and staff get through the budget season is a tabletop exercise for the directors on how to recover after an active shooter incident here in the municipal building. Another one, and I'm working with the police department, is an active shooter training at an off-site venue. I've reached out to Washington Adventist University already to see if they'd like to participate like they did two years ago, and I was also thinking about Montgomery College, do an office-type setting, similar to what happened at the Navy Yard, as opposed to a student-type shooting like Virginia Tech.
What about the public schools, given that we have three of them within Tacoma Park?
I know that Montgomery County schools have their own security and training and planning and everything, because I've done some.
We're a lot closer, of course.
Yeah, as far as using the resources, if it comes in during the time of year when they're not in school, it's probably a place that we could reach out to and use them as well. Haven't actively gone to the schools yet, because I know so much about them internally through their security, that they do have a good emergency operations plans, and they practice six times a year for their fire drills and everything else. So I haven't actively reached out to them yet. I thought I'd do that probably with their staff after the school year is over, before they get involved with too much else. Then we've got some, the drug turn-in program coming April 26, sponsored by the DEA, so we'll have a table there down in the lobby, and like Jennifer said, we're looking at some other off-sites to put out the message. One of the things we're really looking at as a committee is how do we reach the young people, get them thinking about emergency preparedness as well. So I'm doing a little research on some of the websites of what's geared towards the young kids other than video games. So that's what we're trying to work on.
And I know in the past, the council's asked us about reaching out to businesses. That's also one of the groups that we're looking at as far as our strategic-type planning. So as Ron mentioned, younger folks, businesses, seniors, just different community groups, and then we're going to try to make a plan of how we want to, how and when we want to focus on reaching out to these groups. That's pretty much it, if you have any questions about our report.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for the work, for your ongoing work on this important work. I hope you've settled in and happy in your new job now?
I am, thank you, sir.
Okay. You listed tonight, Jennifer, a lot of activities have gone on, and a lot of, you laid out quite a few plans for the future, but what would you say were the three biggest accomplishments that you've made in the last year?
Major accomplishments have really been on the fair outreach. We were busy last year, so in the past, we've really done the Folk Festival and the Street Festival. Last year, we added, well, there was the Celebrate Tacoma Festival, there was also, we did the Fall Drug Take, we had a table at the Fall Drug Take that day. And trying to think what else. And then we also had, as I mentioned, we had some really good discussions, kind of after-action type.
Right.
But the, as I mentioned before, the question is, how do we share that information? So we have a lot of the players together in the room who might not normally meet together in an after-action, but how do we get that information out is what we'll be looking at.
Okay. I think what I'd like to see is maybe just a couple of specific goals for the coming year, and then we can look at those next year and see how things are going, and whether you have the resources you need, things like that.
Okay, excellent. And that's, we're, that is what we're looking at doing as well, kind of trying to get a little more focus on our work.
Yeah, narrow the focus, and also set some goals so that you're working, everybody's working towards the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Councilmember Mayo.
My thanks as well. I just wanted to echo what Councilmember Simmons said, in that, you know, I think having served on some committees, I know it's not always clear exactly what the most effective thing to do, and I know that most committees want to do things that the city and the council will value. So, you know, of the myriad things that you could work on, so if you come back to us with goals or, you know, propose those, it doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be in a session like this, it could be by email, that gives us a chance to say, you know, yes, if you give us more information on this issue, or if you make some recommendations on that issue, that's something the council will be interested in and will follow up on, and I'm assuming the city would welcome the same feedback. Thank you.
And that's also partially why we made some of the edits, and you might have missed this, so the, we've updated the city code portion regarding the Emergency Preparedness Committee to make it more in line with what we're actually doing, and provide a little more guidance for us, so that when we report out, it's really just a quick summary of, this is what we're looking to do, and are we doing it, are we not? So moving forward, that's what we're trying to line up.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And we have that at the back of the pack.
I believe so.
Good. Thanks very much.
All right, thank you all very much. So do we, do we stay for the reading, or?
I don't think it's going to be tonight.
Oh, it's not tonight, okay. Just making sure, thank you.
Sure. And next, we have a presentation from the Recognition Task Force, and I see all of the named members here. Welcome to Dick O'Connor, Diana Cohn, and Howard Cohn, still seated.
Good evening, for the record, Dick O'Connor, 7110 Maple Avenue. We're here today to report on the recommendations of the Recognition Task Force. The task force was established by the council in October of 2013, and its goals were very simple, to look at what types of recognition programs the city has, what formal process, and to make some recommendations with regards to going forward. The committee has met six or seven times, the members did some extensive research on what has gone on within the city, and also recognition programs that are available from other cities around the country. And we've also had a series of discussions with regards to what we believe are things that are lacking within the city with regards to recognition. Basically, we've outlined some of our findings here in the Purpose Clause, but we basically found that there is no formal process for recognition and commemoration programs here in the city, and there's an ad hoc process. And so we're recommending, through this report, that there be established the Commemoration Commission that will take over the process of providing recognition programs in the city, will also do inventorying of the recognition programs that are already in existence, or recognitions that have already occurred, and to look forward to establishing a database, digital database of recognition programs throughout the city. We're recommending that the commission be a nine-member commission, six members be appointed, one from each ward, three at-large members who would be appointed. No members would serve more than two consecutive terms. We believe that that is an important aspect of maintaining not only continuity on the commission, but also getting new members that will bring fresh approaches and fresh ideas towards the, to the process. We've outlined a series of types of recognition programs, commemoration programs, that we've identified. These include three categories. One is a citywide recognition, and we've established some proposals with regards to standards and tests that would be used to designate individuals or businesses or organizations for citywide recognition, then neighborhood local recognition, and then personal recognition programs. Then we've outlined as part of this that we would have some duties and responsibilities the commission would be tasked with, at least in its first year, in establishing an inventory of recognitions that have occurred within the city. We understand that there are many, many former recognition awards, plaques, which are stored in the attic. Some have been removed when we built this building, some have been brought from other areas of the city. So we need to inventory those and probably get them back up somewhere, so that people will be recognized. And then move towards establishing a digital archive of recognition programs and awards in the city, and this would be, we're recommending that the task, that the commission be tasked with that responsibility to come back to the council with recommendations on digitizing, and within a three-year period, move towards total digitization of our historical records. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Diana Cohn and let her discuss other recommendations.
Diana Cohn, 16 Jefferson Avenue, Tacoma Park. Some of the programs would be permanent programs, some of the recognition would be a sign or a plaque, or something that would, the intention would be to leave it up permanently. Some things may be just one-time awards, a name of a person on a concert series, or a film festival, or something that is short-term and isn't intended to be honored forever and ever, but they should still be acknowledged in this permanent digital record, that inventory that Dick was referring to, and that's one of the reasons that Historic Tacoma is particularly interested in this commission, because the more we can collaborate and get information on past prominent citizens, current prominent citizens, even the ones, you know, anticipating the future, the more we can share the legacy of the people who make Tacoma, who've created the community of Tacoma Park, and get access to the entire community and people outside. The internet is such these days that people in Spokane, Washington, are looking to see if somebody they knew who lived in Tacoma Park maybe has a, there is information on the internet, so we'd like to have that there. And the other piece that is involved in implementation is that the commission has a couple other tasks. They would need to identify locations where commemorations could be located, the fees that would go along with, if you want a sign, you want a tile, you want a brick, there's a whole series of obvious ways in which people could be honored. You need to coordinate between the city, because some of the commemorations happen as part of city council functions, some would be coming from the community, and that you need coordination there. You also need coordination with other organizations, like Maryland National Capital Parks and Planning, or the county, or the school, that have control over certain parts of the city. So there's some discussion over how to set those coordinations up, and then that the commission would report back in a year as to what they are, what they're proposing, and how we can collect information that has been lost, and standardize how we present information going forward. So those are our recommendations, and I would like to thank Mayor Bruce and Councilperson Fred Schultz for their particular interest in seeing, in moving this forward, and now it's in all of your hands.
And can you say a few words about the discussion about maintenance?
Oh, maintenance, yes. Maintenance is one of those tricky issues, because you put an award up, and then what happens 20 years later? We're in a situation now where many of the awards that have been up have either disappeared, or have been, they're there, but no one knows, there's a plaque for Kaufman in the triangle, right out, park, right outside here, and no one knows who he is, John Kaufman. So we need to find a way to do, an endowment fund is our suggestion, that there be something built in to the people that ask for recognition of an important person in their neighborhood, or a particular individual and their family, would participate in the maintenance of that item in, for some designated period, whether it's five years, or 10 years, or 30 years, that would be up to the commission. I think that's the only other maintenance. Everything else is records that we've both addressed.
Yeah, because there was a fair amount of discussion about how you, how and if you incorporate maintenance into what's happening, so that I know that there was looking at places that just said, well, you know, if a project comes along and the street gets redone, and it ends up removing some things, that things may not go back where they were, but there at least needs to be a record of where they ended up, whether it's storage or another location, or whatever it is, so that people know that it didn't just disappear, or should it be that somebody can pay into a fund that says there will be maintenance on this? And I recall that most of the discussion was, eh, I probably didn't want to get into that.
Well, I think the commission would need to discuss the equitable aspects of maintenance also, and to establish a program that's equitable for all people and also for the city. And so there are pros and cons of whether we want to establish an endowment fund, and that would be one of the tasks that the commission would have to come back to the council. And there's a long-term budgetary aspect of that, that has to be discussed, and look at the ramifications of that over a long-term period.
And there's an expectation on the part of people who ask for someone to be honored, that either they're going to be honored, and when the tree dies, or the tile plaque cracks, then that's it, and they'll be memorialized in the digital record, but they wouldn't necessarily, do we replace everything, every tree that dies, every tile that's broken, or is there some assumed end of when that tile is there? And that's a question that we did not feel it was appropriate for us to address, but we'd leave it to the general commission.
Councilmember Schultz.
Yeah, can you comment on why it is important for this to be called and organized as a commission, as opposed to a committee, like, because we have lots of committees in the city?
Well, administratively, we're recommending a commission in that this will be assessing fees for the plaque program, or the bench program, or whatever, and as such, it will have some administrative responsibilities to make a determination as to whether or not individuals, businesses, organizations meet the thresholds that are established under the various categories. And so we believe the commission will have the legal authority then to be able to make that determination, whereas a committee would not have that legal authority.
And we chose that distinction, because otherwise, this puts an additional burden on staff, which did not seem to be fair, so that the only way for it to, only way for citizens to be involved in this seemed to be under a commission structure rather than the committee structure. than the committee structure. The intention is not to make even more work for the staff, but for this commission to be the, the go-between.
And, Andy, do you want to comment as well on how, how somebody in the city, or a group of people could bring forth the name of somebody at a neighborhood level, or at a citywide level?
The, the, the categories, we, ours, our recommendations, and they are subject to discussion with the council, among the council members, and even with the commission as it's formed, would be that if, if someone was worthy of citywide recognition, there should be 25 citizens who would be willing to propose that name. When you're talking about a neighborhood, then that's a smaller geographic space, so it would require 10 residents to put forward a name. And if it's an individual, then it's, if it's your spouse, or, or your grandmother who lived, lived in the house, or your grandfather who built the house, then that would be just your recommendation. But there would be a standard form that would require some information about why you want that recognition, and that that form is what would be evaluated by the, by the commission to make the decision about whether to do it. It's just to prevent everything from being willy-nilly, and, and somebody deciding that this person in the neighborhood this year was worthy, when maybe no one else in the neighborhood agrees with that.
Thank you. Councilmember Mail.
Just a couple of thoughts, and these are really broad thoughts. I think about Shelley's poem about Ozzy Mandis. "I'm Ozzy Mandis, King of Kings, look on my works, ye mighty in despair." And it's a pedestal of two feet in the middle of a empty desert. And I say that because, I guess, I wonder, I wonder why we recognize people? You know, if we really think about that, at a deep level, why do we do it? And, and who is it important to? And I wonder, and I think about myself, and the things that I value most, from my children, for example, is when I get a handmade card. It's a thank you. And so, I wonder whether it's plaques and tiles and benches that matter, or whether it's some more personal way to say thank you to people. So, that's my first comment. My second comment is more to council, and it is that I know we have a constant problem of filling vacancies on the, on our committees, commissions, task forces. And I just wonder, as a policy matter, whether we should think about, every time we create a commission, a committee or a commission, sunsetting one for a year. So, having more of a two-year cycle, trying to maintain a stable portfolio of committees and commissions, so that we can actually keep, keep them full and keep them issue-driven. But, in, in general, I mean, I support, I support the idea of honoring people. I just raised that broader question of, you know, of why do we do it? And is, is the permanence really important, or is it, or is it the thanks that's really important? And where is it, where is it one versus the other, or both? Thank you.
I, I would have one comment in answer to that. I sort of see the city of Tacoma Park, the community of Tacoma Park, as a family, an extended family. And the recognition of people who have made contributions in a given neighborhood is like remembering your great uncle. And I think that there's both thanks, which is really important to the person while they are alive. Thanks can only be given to people who are still alive. And after that, I think it is good for our children to know that this community is here because of the work of individuals who are no, who are no longer with us. And this is one way of, of creating that, that memory bank, the institutional memory of the town.
Councilmember Sanders.
Just that last little thought of yours makes me think you ought to be the president of Historic Tacoma. I don't want to drag the conversation out a whole lot, but I know that when, when you started, you talked about looking at other municipalities to see what they do, and I'm assuming this was kind of a best practice you found out there? Are there other municipalities that have this basic approach?
There are many communities throughout the United States who have a variety, myriad of, of programs. And what we tried to do in the packet is give you just a slice of those. My, my own hometown, outside of Boston, has 21 different recognition programs that they have run for 30-plus years. And they run the gamut, from buying a tree for an individual, to having a bench in, in a park, to having bricks at city, at city hall, when, well, it's not city hall, it's town hall. And so, you know, this is, this is a program that, these types of programs have been run in a variety of different methods throughout this country, and I think what we'd have to do is, as a commission, would decide what's appropriate for, for Tacoma Park and how, how it would be presented.
Okay. How many other committees are you on, or commissions are you on here in town?
I am on none.
See, so we might get a new person involved. Thank you.
Well, it would be a long commute if he goes to commission meetings.
Okay. Thanks very much.
Can I add one historical tidbit?
Sure.
Next year, just about this time, we will be on the cusp of celebrating the 125th anniversary of the incorporation of Tacoma Park. So, this seems to be a particularly apropos time to be thinking about commemorating the various citizens who've helped make our community.
And that date is April 15?
It's April 3rd, I think, April, I don't know if it's April 3rd, it's April 15 for the actual recognition from Maryland Assembly, and then it was June 3rd or 5th when they had the election to elect the first mayor.
In the town of Tacoma Park.
In the town, not the city, the town of Tacoma Park. And the first mayor elected was Mr. Gilbert.
Surprise, surprise.
Thanks very much. And we can, we can schedule a work session to see what we might want to do with these We will now move to the next part of the meeting. First thing I want to do is note some upcoming agenda items. We don't have any changes to this evening's agenda, but a couple upcoming items in the coming weeks. Next Monday, March 24th, we'll have a presentation at 7:00 from County Councilmember Sherry Branson, who is the new county council member for District 5, replacing Councilmember Valerie Irvin, who resigned, and so we'll have our first chance to visit with our new council member. The following Monday, March 31st, we're going to have three presentations and an additional item that I just added to the agenda today. The presentations are the, on the relocation of Washington Adventist Hospital, we'll have an update from Hospital President Joyce Newmeyer, we'll have a presentation on the anti-littering campaign, and we'll have a presentation from the Police Department of their annual report. And the item I added today was, we're going to have a council discussion of information retention from public safety cameras, and that's a follow-up from the public safety Then Monday, April 7th, we'll have a hearing on the proposed FYE 2015 budget and a presentation of the proposed budget from the city manager. Tuesday, April 8th, is the Ward 3 special election. Reminder that polls are open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and the election will take park, take place that day at the fire station, and there will be early voting in this building on the, I want to say Saturday, Sunday, Monday before the election. Sunday and Monday. Then we get into budget work sessions following that, and we'll have Thursday budget work sessions on April 10th and April 17th. And in between those, on Monday, April 14th, there will be no city council meeting, because Passover begins at sundown that evening. And finally, Monday, April 21st, will be the swearing-in of the new Ward 3 city council member. So, that's just a couple important dates to remember coming up. At this point, we'll go to public comments on our voting items this evening, so we'll take them in order, and if anybody wants to comment on Agenda Item 3, which is the first reading ordinance providing for the Ward 3 special election, if you would come to the podium and identify yourself, and please keep your comments to three minutes. I see Mr. Lovelace in the back.
Hello, my name is Pat Lovelace, your official free delegate. And I want to ask you people up there, when you had the special election on Ward 3, I think we should try to remember, we're going to carry on where Kay left off. She left us a job to do, and we've got to do it right. We've got to try and get as many people out to vote, many people out there to vote, and if they're not registered, maybe they can register to vote too. But I think we should try to get as many people out there to vote, and vote conscientiously, and vote responsibly. Try to think about what Kay would have done, what she would have wanted for her city, and our city. I think we can do it. I know, I know we can do it as human beings, and as, as a city pulling together, I know we can do it, and I know Ward 3 can do it. Because Kay said, "Ward 3 rocks," and it does. So, remember, we're going to carry on that, and remember, "Ward 3 rocks, and Ward 4 rolls." So, remember, so remember, let's carry on where Kay left off. She's still got the gold stars up there. I know that. And I'm wearing these beads here to, to let everybody remember, and I'll be wearing them until she's sworn, until the new, until the new council member is sworn in. But I know we can do it. I know we're all going to keep her on our mind now, and keep on thinking what she would want to have done for our city, for our city preparedness, committed emergency preparedness, and also what she would like to do for our children, and our adults, and other things in our city, in our environment. We ought to think about that. And maybe we can do stuff not only locally, but nationally too, for peace. Remember, she was a woman of peace. Thank you very much. So, when you, when you go out there and vote on the 8th, vote with a conscience and vote responsibly, and tell your friends to vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to comment on the first reading ordinance for the Ward 3 special election? Okay. Does anybody wish to comment on Agenda Item Number 4, which is first reading ordinance opting out of Chapter 47 vendors of the Montgomery County Code and revising the city's vendor Okay. I don't see anybody who wants to comment on that one, so we will move along to other public comments, and this is a chance to comment on anything that's on our, anything else that's on our agenda that isn't a voting item, or anything else that isn't on our
Hi, I'm Steve Shapiro, Willow Avenue, several things. One, maybe you all are aware of it, maybe not, but in the last few years, traffic at Tacoma Junction at non-rush hour times, a number of us have noticed appreciable change, and where it would take sometimes two minutes to get through from Holt and East, and East-West Highway 410 Philadelphia, over towards Carroll Avenue, heading towards Flower, it now can take six, seven minutes on non-rush hour times, whether it's a matter of the lights, increased traffic and all, but I think it's a city issue. I know we have other traffic concerns, but this is one. I'd like to comment about the recycle crew. They're new, they're earnest, I think they're giving it their best. They were sending out emails weekly to bring people into it, and then they stopped for President's Day weekend. Some of us didn't put our stuff out. I phoned them up, and they said, "No problem, just put it out on Thursday, and we'll come pick it up." Very graciously, they did. And I'd like to commend them. Third thing is about trash collection, yard waste. We got word from the city that there would be no collection yesterday, but they very kindly came by anyway on a number of our blocks, including Willow Avenue, and appreciate their doing so. And appreciate the trash crew in general. Appreciate the crews who come out and plow our streets during all the snowstorms. There's a concern about the salt, several concerns. One, I don't know, I was on the committee for the environment of the city for about 10 years, and I, and I don't know whether the city has now looked at the issue of how much salt is used, does, or whether the amount of salt is being excessive or not, and are there alternatives to putting all the salt into the bay? But if it's not been considered, I would recommend asking the Committee on the Environment to do an assessment with Public Works about the salting. There has been about half of the time this, this season, salt has been sprayed along Willow Avenue, along the cars, about 18 inches high, half the time not. Darrell, the other week, told me, "Oh, we have the best of the best, and you just have to live with this." And I would be lying to you if I didn't tell you that her long spiel to me strains my credulity. Yesterday, when they, when they plowed, they did not spray all the cars, and it's, it's an issue which I think I will raise again if it continues. Just one last thing, if you'll indulge me. Recreation has had open houses where you can meet people and all this sort of thing. With all of our city workers, maybe I've missed it, but it seems to me it might be good at some point to have an open house where Public Works, library, and all the people, there could be something on a Saturday where the community come out and get to talk to all the people who serve our cities. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This may take a little longer than three minutes, and I apologize for that. I'm Buddy Daniels, 19 Sherman Avenue, Ward 3. Thank you, Pat, for what you said. I'm here tonight to thank all of the city's staff involved in my sister's memorial service and reception on Sunday, March 9th, here at the community center. But first, I would like to thank the organizing committee from our neighborhood, Michelle Morgan, who coordinated it, Linda Coco, Ann Williams, Carol Holton, Julie Hassett, and Sylvie, Brian Kenner's wife. She's awesome. Also, I would like to thank Amanda Poppy of the Washington Ethical Society for her comments about my sister, and introducing the other speakers. Thank you to Mayor Lefner, our poet laureate, Councilmember Seth Grimes, the great, and I do mean the great, Howard Cohn, Michelle Cropp, one of Kay's very best friends, Tricia Swanson, Kay's best old friend, David Macagon, her son, Alex Macagon, her granddaughter. Many of my friends have discussed with me how powerful this ceremony was. It has affected them in very positive ways. Thank you to Sandy Macagon, Kay's daughter, for the PowerPoint tremendous slideshow during and after the program. And to my brother-in-law, Jack Cohen, he did an amazing job with everyone involved with the program and the reception. Thank you to Mayor Williams and the entire city council, and Brian Kenner, for your comments about my sister during the city council's tribute on March 24th, and everyone else who spoke at that very special Monday night. Now, about the Tacoma Park city staff. My sister's memorial would not have happened without your help and working with the volunteer memorial committee, and that's, that's the committee's words themselves, and they are absolutely correct. These are my words. Sarah Danes, Jesse Carpenter, Suzanne Ludlow, Peggy Washington, thank you for your guidance, leadership, and coordination, and logistical help. To the library staff and Director Ellen Arnold Robbins, the same, thank you. And you guys are great at the reception, helping set up. To the cable TV video producer, manager, Averil Calbia, and Bien Martinez, audiovisual specialist, and the entire cable TV staff, thank you for the broadcast and the PowerPoint presentation broadcast all over the municipal center. I know Kay's friends watched the ceremony all over the United States, and in some cases, all over the world. For Kay's friends who could not attend the ceremony, it really meant a lot to watch it on their computers. To the police department, Chief Goldberg, thank you for your support and help. To Captain Collington and Sergeant Irwin, and congratulations to Sergeant Irwin, thank you for your support and logistical help with solving any parking problems. They moved the police cars under the parking garages, so the lower parking They moved the police cars under the parking garages so the lower parking lot could be used for memorial parking, which made it so much easier on people who didn't exactly know where to park or where the building was. And thank you for also attending in your dress blues. That really meant a lot, and that was special. I'm sure I've not mentioned all the Tacoma Park staff that participated in the organization, organization of my sister's memorial, and for that I apologize, but there were around two-hundred-and-fifty people in attendance. As I have said, without the staff's help, the memorial would not have been, would not have succeeded on such a large scale and meant so much to so many of Kay's friends all over Tacoma Park, all over the United States and all over the world. So, thank you all very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Good evening. Rue McKensit from Washington Adventist University, and we are delighted to be a part of this city and to be your institution of higher learning, preparing your citizens for life here and all over this world. We have by intention planned to be a part of this city and to be engaged on an ongoing basis, and we have a number of events coming up shortly. We have Service Day coming up, once in the spring, once in the fall. On April two, five to six hundred of our students will be scattered all over your city doing various acts of service. They not only are being trained to give back to their community, but to be meaningful about it in that the day they become the adults who will run our city and the various places they live, that they can also model for the people they live and serve, they live with and serve. We also have coming up Bone Marrow Match Day on April two, and our intention is to have about a hundred or so of our students who will sign up to be donors so that they can help people that are in need of what they have to give that is a part of their life. We hope to raise about five thousand dollars to present to the organization that will be doing this. So if you're interested on April two in the afternoon, come on over, and they will do the screening, just a swab, and will determine if you can offer bone marrow to someone who is in great need. We also have a couple of our students, one is going to present. Larissa is a junior business management student, and we have a big day coming up. It's a day when it seems all the city comes together. Tell them who you are and what you're doing at WAU.
Hi, good evening. It's a pleasure to be with you all tonight. My name is Chris Machado, and I'm representing the Family Fun Fest team at Washington Adventist University. The festival features food from local restaurants, live music, children's entertainment and local businesses. Wauwu's Family Fun Festival is a locally established tradition and has provided wholesome entertainment to the community for over a decade. This year, our radio station, WGTS ninety-one point nine, will feature Josh Wilson, a contemporary Christian recording artist, and throughout the day, there will be various performances performed by Sligo Church and also other groups at Washington Adventist University. Um, incredible creatures will be here again, and they'll bring an array of reptiles and have a show for the kids. The kids can also enjoy moon bounces, face painting and carnival-style games. A variety of local food vendors will be catering to all attendees throughout the event. The festival is, has been around for decades and, sorry, has been around for decades, and we are proud to be a part of Tacoma Park and give the community a taste that we have, that we offer to the city. I also would like to thank you all for your support for our university and for the great work you have done and continue to do for the community. I hope to see you all April thirteenth at Family Fun Fest. I also have some flyers for each of you.
All right.
I don't know if I can.
Yes. Give them one each. She will hand them out. One last fact before we depart. The university, Washington Adventist University, for the first time in its history, became Division One champion in basketball, U.S., A.C.
U.S.C.A.
U.S.C.A. First time Division One, and we are proud about that. On Thursday evening, we are going to celebrate with our young men for this great accomplishment for the city. Next thing you know, that Tacoma Park will be winning the NBA.
Thank you very much and congratulations.
Hi, I'm Jeffrey Nollnospom, two-two-eight Manor Circle. I just wanted to comment on two things. The first was listening and looking at the Recognition Task Force report. Well, I appreciate a lot of the things they put forward. I am on a similar thought about all this committees and boards and commissions the city already has and the ability to be able to fill a new nine-member commission. And I'm wondering how much of the work that they proposed can be done under existing systems and if, I think much of the work, it sounds like to me, that would need to be done is the catch-up work, going back to things that may have fallen by the wayside that was done before and making sure, figuring, and figuring out, you know, the mechanics going forward, and so maybe extending the task force for a little while to be able to complete that and figure out those mechanics, and once that's done, maybe it can be done without a commission. It's just one thing to maybe keep in mind. And also, I see the last item on the agenda tonight is a closed session on collective bargaining issues. I just wanted to mention that I am a local government employee with Montgomery County, and one of the bargaining units here in Tacoma, in Tacoma Park is UFCW four-hundred. I'm UFCW nineteen ninety-four, and I just wanted to say, just remember to keep in mind that whatever the issue, issues you're discussing, that cooperation with employees and their representatives improves the management of the city and the government, and it, and in any business, it does that as well. Successful businesses and successful governments always know how to cooperate and learn from their employees as well as the employees learning from the employer. So I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Mr. Lovelace in the back.
Hello, my name is Pat Lovelace, seventy-six twenty Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park, Maryland, your official peace delegate. One thing I would like to do is commend, repeat the city on the snow removal on the streets. I've noticed it, even blind, I could notice it. And a lot of the sidewalks, my nurses told me this morning, my healthcare worker told me this morning, that she didn't have too much, had a bit of a time getting in here today because after the snow started, people started clearing their sidewalks off. So I'm really, really grateful to hear that, but also, she said, there's a few sidewalks here and there that weren't cleared. But I'm wondering, a lot of people out there, maybe elderly or disabled, and a lot of people may be injured or something like that and unable to clear their sidewalk, and I'm wondering, is it possible if the city could use a community service program like some of the people who have been arrested and get sentenced to community service, if they could somehow divert some of them over to clearing the sidewalks for the elderly and for the disabled who cannot possibly clear their sidewalks and help them avoid a fine? Because I think, you know, it would really be helpful if we had a pool of people who would be willing to help the handicapped and disabled clear their sidewalks. It could also save a life, not only their life, because they could slip on the ice too, but a lot of people that could really help, and I'd like to see that, because that way we could work, work for going towards one-hundred percent sidewalk clearance. I'd love to see that, because then people are coming down the sidewalk on, you know, on foot, would not have to worry about tripping and falling and breaking a bone. Because I noticed like that, something like that happened, I noticed like the fall, and it's not very funny, and it can happen within a split microsecond, within a nanosecond. You can go from good health to being in the operating room, and I don't want to see that happen to anybody. It happened to me once, and it wasn't even on the ice. But on the ice, I know I would break something, but today I noticed that the, a lot of places were cleared out, and I want to thank everybody for what they've done, and I'd like to ask the city if they could have a program set up for a pool of people who'd be willing to help handicapped and the disabled, and also people who are on community service, if they could do some of the community service hours on the snow removal. That'd be great. Thank you very much, and remember, the memorial service for Kay Daniels Cohen was beautiful. I loved it. I wouldn't have missed it for the world. I didn't think I'd be able to get a ride down there, but I got another person helped me walk down there on the wheelchair, and I was not willing to miss it. And I want to thank the city for remembering her like that. A woman of peace deserves to be remembered, and remember, let's have peace in our environment too. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm a little bit confused. Is this the appropriate time to comment on the bike share, or is there going to be a report and discussion afterwards?
It's the appropriate time to comment.
Okay. So before I comment on the bike share, I will follow up on the snow clearing. It's been really exciting to see city crews working in Old Town, clearing the sidewalks. They've been really prompt. I'm not, I suspect it might be a state highways truck, but it's very odd to me that we got all the sidewalks cleared in Old Town, and yet some plow had plowed two piles of snow in front of the curb ramps at the top of Westmoreland. And I just kind of assumed it wasn't a city truck doing that, because that would be one city truck plowing the snow, you know, ruining the work of what the other city workers were doing. But there's been a lot of good work. I was also successful at getting a property owner to stop plowing the snow from the business property onto the sidewalk, so, so now it stays in the street, and the city crews and the park crews don't have to move it back off of the sidewalk. But anyway, I'm here to comment on the, the bike share. My name's Bob Patton. I live on seven zero zero five Westmoreland Avenue, and when the bike share was being planned, I talked with city staff, met them in Old Town and discussed all of the issues around where the bike share station could be sited, because I was concerned about the proposed location being in the gazebo park, Tacoma Park Park. And after discussing all of the issues, it appeared to me that it was really difficult to find a better spot. I was kind of concerned it would take up too much space and be a problem for the music events and other things that happen there. I've kind of changed my mind, and I know my wife submitted some comments. I think it will work out fine at the location that it's at. I'm not sure I know the specific details, but if it's going to cost some thousands of dollars to move it to another location in Old Town, I think that we ought to try it where it is for a year and see how it goes before expending that money, because there's probably better things that we might be able to do with that, that money. I've talked with Seth about the whole issue, and I do feel that if, if a motor vehicle parking space was going to be taken on the street to, to put the bike share there, I think that's something to consider. So my main concern is really about the cost of, of moving the whole thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we will move on to council comments. Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you. Thanks to everyone who's commented and turned out, even if you haven't commented today. I have a few things, one of which is going to be on the bike share, but I'll save that for when we discuss the Safe Roadways Committee report. Start with a good thing, which is, of course, with the Ward Three election coming up, we do have, Mr. Lovelace touched on the importance of voting, we do have since last year, same-day registration and voting, so that people will be able to register to vote in city elections up to and including Election Day, April the eighth, and that's a good thing. Onto less pleasant things. I attended the WAMADA, that's the Metro Board Meeting of the Real Estate Committee last week. You'll recall that the Tacoma Park City Council was invited to submit a prioritized list of requests to the board for consideration and the resolution that they were going to adopt, that they are going to adopt most likely for an amended and restated Tacoma Joint Development Agreement with developer EYA, also setting a compact hearing. The committee, which was chaired at last week's meeting by WAMADA Board Chair Tom Downs, did consider the Tacoma Park requests. Kathy Porter was instrumental in having them consider the requests. She also discussed them with WAMADA staff there, and they were largely accepted and included in the resolution as passed by the Real Estate Committee. One exception was perhaps the most important one to us regarding the size of the building, the height of the building, which in the EYA design does rise to seventy-two feet in a, an area that is zoned residential and commercial forty and fifty-foot limits, so that is eighty percent above the forty-foot limit. Instead, what the board with staff assent agreed to do was to remove the square footage of the project from the resolution. That will be considered by the full WAMADA Board on the twenty-seventh of March. I plan to be there. I do expect that the board will pass that resolution, which will then mean that the process will move forward in a number of ways. One is that WAMADA will schedule a compact hearing. Compact is the agreement that set up WAMADA for the public to comment on the project. One of our requests that was included in the resolution was that comments on the design of the building would be, I forget the exact word, but received by WAMADA as part of the compact hearing. There will be other elements of the process as well, the planned unit development process for TC zoning and so on. To move on to another thing, the least pleasant, the State Highway Administration, I'm not referring to the, the screw-up by the State Highway Administration and its contractors of the New Hampshire Avenue Bridge over Sligo Creek Park. I am referring to the memorandum of understanding that Tacoma Park City Council agreed with the State Highway Administration. Looking at that document, it was signed by Administrator Melinda Peters on February twenty-second, two thousand thirteen, going into effect on the twenty-sixth of February two thousand and thirteen. That agreement includes in, the memorandum of understanding, I should say, includes in its section four on signalization, first paragraph A, "The city will receive notice of proposed signalization changes along the Maryland four-ten within the city and will be provided the opportunity to comment." Maryland four-ten within the city includes Philadelphia Avenue. I received from a resident of Ward One, email from a State Highway Administration official saying that the State Highway Administration had examined the signal timing just out here at Philadelphia, that's four-ten and Maple Avenue, and made adjustments to it. So far as I know, and conferred with staff, the city received no notice nor opportunity to comment. Therefore, to the best of my knowledge, the State Highway Administration is in violation of the memorandum of understanding. Further, signalization, paragraph four B, says that the S.H.A., I'm reading, "In cooperation with the city, will use its best efforts to explore the possibility of transferring control of Maryland four-ten traffic signal operations within the city to Montgomery County. In support of this effort, S.H.A. will promptly conduct an analysis of signals and so on within one-hundred-and-eighty days, within one-hundred-and-eighty days of the execution of this agreement." Now, February twenty-sixth, one-hundred-and-eighty days would have been, what, August twenty-sixth? With one-hundred-and-eighty days of the execution of this agreement, S.H.A. will provide the city information on the estimated cost and extent of work required to transfer control of, I won't read anymore, you get the idea. I would propose that the council direct the city manager, since this is really not a policy matter, but rather an operational matter, that the council direct the city manager to communicate with the administrator of the State Highway Administration, expressing our concern about the lack of compliance with memorandum of, excuse me, the memorandum of understanding. And I'd look to my colleagues to, for agreement or comment on, on that suggestion.
I'm assuming everybody would agree with Councilmember Grimes that you should take care of that.
Yes.
So directed. Thanks. Councilmember mail.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of comments, just general comments. We know that at some point in the future, we don't know exactly when, State Highway will be working to replace the bridge deck on the Carroll Avenue Bridge over Sligo Creek. And I've talked to city staff, the city manager about this issue, but I, I really wish that we were right now putting in place a plan to think about the costs of, the ways that we can prepare for that project way in advance. we can prepare for that project way in advance. So I know that some parts of our response are dictated by the subsequent detour routes that are identified by SHA. But we know that from, through every street that touches Carroll Avenue in Ward 5, and Ward 3, and Ward 2, and maybe even parts of Ward 6, there is going to be traffic bleeding out of the parts of Carroll that are open to get around that detour. And so I really think we should be putting in place a plan to look at, to look at our current projects for street repaving and figure out whether there are streets in those areas that should be a higher priority. We should be evaluating all the speed bumps and other traffic calming infrastructure that's in those areas, and trying to look at whether there are any that need to be replaced doing that now. I just think it makes sense to start that at this point in time, when we are still working on our budget, we still have the opportunity to make adjustments, to make those sorts of plans, to adjust essentially work plans for the new year, even though we don't, again, know the specifics of the detour routes, to be just that one step ahead, because we know it's going to be a miserable experience for our residents. We have right now only the State Highway Administration's best guess that once they take off the deck, they're not going to need to replace the entire superstructure. But imagine if it's not just a one-year project, but a two-year project or a three-year project. Imagine if they go to rebuild it, and it turns out that they did faulty concrete, and it's a five-year project. I mean, just think of the things that could go wrong based on our recent experience with SHA. And I would just want us to try to do, within the limits of the city's power, the things that we can do right, so that we can turn around and say to residents, well, you know, we're sorry, and we'll do everything we can to get the state to, you know, to do what they're supposed to do, but within the things that are within our power, we really are proactive about that. And I just don't have a sense for the condition of our infrastructure in all of those potential places to know better, well enough, you know, what those projects would be, but I just hope we can work on that soon. And then the second issue I wanted to bring up, and my colleagues have heard me talk about this by email, is that I'm just concerned about our plans for spending down the sustainability funding that was put in the budget for the last year. We put $250,000 in the budget. Part of that was for the compost program that we heard a resident, Mr. Shapiro, praise tonight, which is fantastic. Part of it was for hiring a sustainability expert to help us develop, in part, energy programs, both for multifamily housing and single-family housing, to help residents save money. But I'm just, I'm used to the city staff being fantastic about taking a budget allocation and getting that money spent by the end of the year, you know, really getting that covered. And just from the update that I had recently, my understanding is that we will, at present, with present planning, end the year with roughly 40% of the funding unallocated. And I would just like us to see, like us as a council, to see whether we could schedule a work session to talk about potential council priorities for those, that use of funding, whether it could be the establishment of a reserve fund, a sustainability reserve fund, that would keep that money in place from this budget year and allow it to transition into next year, when presumably, I believe, we will at least likely consider, potentially vote on making a sustainability allocation for next year, or in fact, for projects that could happen this year, which would take a relatively small staff, staff time allocation, and so it could potentially be done. Because I just know this issue has been important to residents. I've seen, I believe last year, the only two, maybe three, public comments from people we received in budget hearings was about this funding. I've been present for other council meetings about the budget, where there were 20 or 30 people in this room asking about the funding. So it's a rare issue where we've actually got people participating in the budget process asking for us to do something, and it would be disappointing to not do that. I'll stop there. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz.
First of all, I want to thank Pat Lovelace for your comments with regard to Kay at the beginning of this meeting. I couldn't agree with you more that we need to try to carry on her mission and the way she saw it. I want to make a special, give a special thank you to the Department of Public Works for installing three sets of new trash bins in my ward. This is a pretty minor thing overall, when you consider the magnitude of some of the things we discuss and stuff we've been talking here tonight. But these are the little things that make so much of a difference to the residents of a neighborhood, to help us all feel like we're being listened to and that our neighborhood is improving. And so therefore, a big thanks to Darryl Braithwaite and her people. This Friday, I'm going to be attending and more or less representing the city at the, an all-day conference at the University of Maryland School of, College of Architecture and Planning, it's the, called, been pulled together by the Purple Line Corridor Coalition that's going to be listening to speakers from around the United States and local experts on how to optimize the impact of the Purple Line on small businesses, to provide help to small businesses during the construction process, how to improve or optimize sustainability, environmental sustainability and economic sustainability. And we're going to be learning about best practices and also with regard to preserving affordable housing, which is a deep concern to many people in the Tacoma Langley area with regard to the impact of the Purple Line. And I'll be, and I think some city staff are going to be attending that as well. So we shall see what we learn there. I wanted to comment, as in particular, about the city's decision to be closed yesterday because of the snowstorm. I was struck by the fact that while the snowstorm was just one of many we've had this winter, it certainly wasn't the worst of the ones we've had this winter. It's been a crazy winter. But I realized that when all was said and done, this was not a very challenging snowstorm with regard to getting our streets plowed, and that all the businesses in the city were functioning. State of Maryland was functioning, restaurants, retailers, local Montgomery College, University of Maryland, and the State of Maryland were all managing to remain open and do what they do, and yet we were closed. And in fact, Montgomery County didn't close, and it delayed its official opening until 10 o'clock in the morning and offered liberal leave to its employees. And I was thinking, and I learned from staff that the reason we closed is that the federal government chose to close, which of course is another mystery altogether. But, and that this policy was adopted some years ago because it would make it so much easier for everybody to understand whether they're supposed to come to work or not, if our closure could be tied to the government, federal government's closure. And in days gone by, the federal government had a different policy, and it only closed down on very rare occasions. And when it did, it was such, it was a big enough snowstorm that it made news, and we, everybody understood that we were dealing with a real emergency. Nowadays, however, the federal government has changed its policy and closes for less severe situations. And we also know that snowstorms are difficult to predict, that a snowstorm that can affect a lot of federal employees that live in Westford, say, Northern Virginia or Southern Maryland may not have, be anywhere near as severe in this particular area of the metropolitan area. So I, plus the fact is, is that technology has changed, and we don't have any difficulty being able to communicate with every single one of our employees if we need to by text or email or through our website. And that wasn't always the case 10, 12, 15 years ago. So I think what I'd like to see us do is revisit this policy and look at the possibility of being able to allow the city manager and with consultation with senior staff to be able to make a decision based on the peculiar weather situation in our area. We're excellent at plowing our streets, the state highways get plowed early, so it's not like we're an isolated area. I just don't think it's a good idea for us to be closed down and have to cancel all kinds of meetings, including in this case, the city council meeting, plus lose another workday for our busy employees, particularly at the senior levels, when time is of the essence to get things done. I just, I think it's not the right approach. Now, I've also learned in the process of my discussions with staff over the last couple, day and a half or so, is that doing this sort of change is not as easy as just doing it. It involves the relationship that the city has with its unions. And so we need to be very thoughtful about how such a change would affect our employees and be able to figure out a way that maybe this could be done that would be acceptable and work within our, in the context of our union negotiations. And I appreciate that knowledge, which I lacked before. But I think it's something that would be, could work in the favor of everybody in the city government from top to bottom, and allow us not to be in a situation where, say, Montgomery County staff are calling the city of Tacoma Park on a day when the county's open and the city's closed, and not really understanding why there's nobody picking up the phone on this end. I could go on, I don't want to belabor it at the present time, but it just seems to me that if businesses and the local institutions are quite capable of having their employees come to work, then we, there shouldn't be any difference. After all, our police department is always on the job, and our public works department, which is our second-largest department, a large chunk of those employees have to come to work anyway to deal with the snow. So we're really talking about a large chunk of our city employees coming to work anyway, even when the city is officially closed. So anyway, that's what I want to comment on. I think it's something that we'll be coming back to, to visit with staff's help in the future. Thank you.
I want to comment on a couple of things. The first is, I would just want to let folks know that we had the community forum with discussion between the council members and the Gazette and The Voice on March 5th, and the intent is to do it again at some point in the future, and we will try and set it up and make sure that all of the council is available. In particular, apologies to Councilmember Grimes, since he was not able to be there. I want to take a minute and talk about attendance at the National League of Cities Congressional Cities Conference a week ago. Councilmembers Smith and Mayo and I attended. The city has been a member of the National League of Cities for a couple of years, but no one had attended any of their conferences, and this was our first opportunity to do so. And I just wanted to let folks know that I found it to be a valuable resource. I wasn't sure going what I would find. And I'll just tell you a couple of things that I came across there that I thought were valuable. One session that was a breakfast session was on open data, and that's basically kind of how you compile sets of data that are available publicly to create some new results, some new resources. An example that they gave in the pre-digital era was in 19th century London, where they, somebody put together the incidence of cholera breakout and the water sources in London and went, gee, I think cholera is caused by something in the water. They came up with some other examples that I thought might be helpful in the city, combining more information with film crew permits, if we're doing film crew permits, about what else is going on in those areas that might affect that. Or combining utility databases for street repairs, we do some of that, but being able to do more of that. Or potentially reporting potholes to Department of Public Works via social media, rather than having to tie up an individual to take those, you know, and compile them. And this was put together by IBM and their cityforward.org program, which is part of their Institute of Business Value, and there were some interesting resources available there. I went to a discussion of marijuana laws, as they are presently constituted in Colorado and Washington. That was a discussion among municipalities from the western states, and it was also interesting because the presenter for the state of Washington was my brother. So it was an interesting conversation. I attended the First Tier Suburbs Meeting. I went to a Building Resilient Communities in the Face of Climate Change with, Councilmember Mayo was there at that one as well. Councilmember Smith and I went to Smart Growth America's Local Leaders Council reception, and I also went to a session on using technology to improve public safety, and that was some discussion about radios and protocols. And that was put together by somebody who I've known for years, who could be a resource for dealing with some police technologies. So all in all, I thought it was a valuable conference, and I did get to meet a lot of people from around the country. And the interesting thing was that no matter how large, how small, what section of the country, we face a lot of the same problems and are looking for a lot of the same solutions. And their other conference during the year is in November, and that one is the big conference. This one was the federal legislatively focused conference, and so much smaller, so it only had 1,500 people. The upcoming one in November will be in Austin, Texas, and will be much larger with a larger smorgasbord of sessions and information available. So I thought it was valuable to go to. I also went to my quarterly local government advisory committee meeting on the Chesapeake Bay last week in Richmond, and saw some interesting green infrastructure at their, at the state Capitol, on the grounds there, and talked about progress on the new bay agreement. And one of the things that came up from that was that they're looking to make sure that homeowners credits, homeowners' projects can get best management practice credits in the bay agreement, and things that they mentioned in particular were credit for rain gardens and for tree planting. So there's some possibilities there for improving what we get as far as basically our contribution to cleaning up the bay and our sustainability credits that way. Also, just wanted to mention, had another Arlen Municipal League Legislative Committee meeting last week. I expressed my displeasure at our not meeting for a month in the middle of session. There was a fairly reasonable explanation of why that was the case, that the activity had been such that, because this was the fourth year of a four-year session and right before the elections, that stuff just wasn't moving, and there just wasn't that much to discuss. So I impressed upon them that we could still do other things at that, and provided my idea that it would be a good opportunity to match up people who are less experienced at lobbying in Annapolis and participating in legislative process with those who've had some experience, and have people go down and basically go second chair on some of the presentations, some of the lobbying that takes place, some of the testimony that takes place. And everybody thought, oh, that's a good idea, why hadn't we thought of that before? So maybe we'll make some progress there. Wanted to alert my colleagues that the Maryland Municipal League Montgomery Chapter meeting this Thursday night is going to be meeting with the county council and with particular focus on the budget that was just released. And also to alert folks that the proposal for the follow-up to all of the work that's going into tax duplication has resulted in a draft proposal to name two people representing the municipalities in that, in that work group to work over a short timeframe this summer to come to some kind of agreement with the county on this. And at the moment, that proposal does not include a representative from Tacoma Park. I sent an email earlier today, which I copied all of you on, expressing my displeasure at that, and it would be helpful to have backup from colleagues on Thursday night, when I will be chairing the meeting, which will be approving the draft letter with the proposal for the nominees by the municipalities. It would be helpful to have a strong representation from Tacoma Park saying, we need to be on this task force.
I'll be there. Who votes?
It'll be, it'll be the chapter deciding, so it'll be, it'll be all of us.
So any individual who's an official can vote?
Yes.
Interesting.
I'll be there.
I'll happily vote. I'll happily vote against it, because I think we should opt out.
And finally, just wanted to point out to everybody, a couple of the upcoming performances in the We Are Tacoma series, just the remaining ones this month. Tomorrow night at 7:30, elementary students from Gretchen Weigel Scene Study Class perform theatrical scenes using the Stanislavski-based acting technique, watch children's amazing capacity for believability in acting. Then Sunday, the 23rd, at 7 o'clock, the Folklore Society of Greater Washington Showcase will feature local and visiting musicians from across the American tradition, including bluegrass, Celtic, and blues. And finally, Friday, March 28th, at 7:30, Seeking Bernice Abbott's New York. Nicole Burton and Jim Landry present a multimedia event of spoken word, music, and photographs from famed photographer Bernice Abbott's 1935 to 1939 series on the WPA Federal Art Project and Jim Landry's 2013 interpretation. So some interesting programs coming up. And I'll just jump real quick to Saturday, April 12th, which is a program entitled Hello Sailor, Bodhi Songs Concert and Sing-Along. And it'll be leading a quartet of Bodhi Song aficionados. Songs will be drawn from medieval brothels, pubs, and tall ships. So a number of diverse presentations as part of the We Are Tacoma series. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. I would like to concur with the mayor's comments regarding the National League of Cities Congressional Conference. It was the best conference I think I've been to since sitting on the council. I would hope council members agree that we should continue to participate, not just in the National League of Cities, but one or two of their conferences throughout the year. I attended a session on the Affordable Care Act. And what was very interesting is throughout the country, there are many council members that do not like the Affordable Care Act. There are a lot of mayors that have problems with the Affordable Care Act. And one of the big problems is trying to find personnel to actually administer it, since it's so new. And what that means for, you know, the running of their city. Another session I attended was on transit-oriented development. I thought that was very important, since we are going through all these issues with the Tacoma Metro. A lot of cities, whether it's Palo Alto or Las Vegas, you know, they're all trying to do transit-oriented development. Some people are more successful than others, but the biggest problem is trying to find developers that are interested in doing it, the way that the municipality wants it, and two, finding the money. Because the federal government, it's so difficult to get money from them nowadays, because you don't have pork. So those were some of the very good sessions that I attended at the National League of Cities. Now, I want to discuss a letter that I received from a constituent, Maxine Hillary. She wanted to talk about a landlord whose property abuts her single-family home. And this landlord, on numerous occasions, has had violations for trash and other issues. I would hope that my colleagues would join me in reviewing an area of the housing code that we have not used. Previous councils thought it was not the best course of action, and that is eminent domain. We can continue to send letters, we can send this landlord to Colta over and over and over, and nothing seems to change. And this landlord, the owners of the property are attorneys, so going to court for them is just another day. I think that we need to use some type of mechanism that makes this landlord decide that they're going to get out of the landlord business in Tacoma Park, sell it to MHP or one of the other nonprofits that are, seem to be doing a good job in the city. Or they're going to put the resources into this property so that not just single-family homeowners send complaints, but even the tenants that live in this building send me complaints. Whether it's illegal activity going on in the building, whether it's people that don't live in the building showing up on the property, hanging out. It's just a continuing issue that we do not seem to be able to get our hands around. And finally, the Essex House tenants are voting to create a tenant association. I would encourage the tenants to approve this proposal. This will help the city be able to make sure that their rights are enforced, especially during this time while they're having renovations going on at the building. And a lot of tenants are having, you know, they're restless. They don't know what's going to happen to the rents at the building. They don't know what's going to happen with whether or not they will be able to come back to an apartment that is going to be what they had before they moved in. Meaning that all the problems that happened at Parkview, since this building is right next door to them, they've heard about those. They don't know if those situations are going to bleed over into their building. They don't know if people are going to, you know, just appear, contractors are just going to appear at the tenants' apartments while they're getting ready during the day, or all types of issues. So they're restless. They're une, there's a sense of unease regarding this renovation, and it hasn't even started yet. So I encourage the tenants to form this tenant association so that the city can help them reinforce their lights, or rights and make sure that the landlord does this renovation in a way that the tenants are satisfied. Thank you.
Councilmember Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just wanted to voice support for, I guess, support for, sympathy for Councilmember Smith and the problems that he faces in his ward with some of the apartment owners. And I would like to suggest that maybe Mayor Williams, you could work with city manager to have a session where we can discuss this in some detail with some alternatives for improving things. Right now, the situation that Mr. Smith described is mirrored in Ward Four and, I think, to some extent, in Ward Six. Where there are apartment owners who are just not taking adequate care of the properties to the expense, at the expense of the tenants. Right now, we have a landlord on Lee Avenue that has repeatedly left trash accumulate around the property to where we've had to have the county go in and do a lean and clean on the property. But that doesn't solve any problem, because, you know, a couple of weeks later, trash is accumulating again. I think we need to discuss what alternatives we might be able to make in implementing a tougher policy to address those situations more aggressively. Thank you.
Councilmember Mayo, you have something additional?
Yeah, Joe, I just wanted to comment that, and I think it would be helpful to have guidance on this, whether, when we discuss policy issues as a general matter, it obviously makes sense to do it in open meetings. But if we're discussing specific, constituent-specific properties, that that is something that may be appropriate to discuss in closed sessions. So I just raised that as an issue in which I think at least I would benefit from guidance. And just as a note in passing to Councilmember Simmons's comments, I do note that the District of Columbia has a special tax rate, which I believe is 10 times higher than the base tax rate on property tax for what are essentially derelict or, you know, blighted, thank you, blighted properties. So I just mentioned that in passing. Thank you.
And interesting that you do so, because in the legislature in Annapolis, the bill that we've discussed a little bit and commented on is going forward in a fashion that doesn't take away something that's a power that we already have, which is to define classes of property for tax assessment purposes, for tax rate purposes, so that we have the power, which the counties do not have, to define a tax class such as a blighted property and set a different tax rate for them in our budget process. The only change resulting in the state law that I think has passed or is going to pass has been that we would have a separate resolution establishing that tax class separate from the budget. But there are 55 reasons why we can have different tax classes for different properties as we define.
I'm sorry, Mayor, could you just clarify? Is that a hopeful story or a less hopeful one? I didn't quite get the direction.
It's a hopeful story, because the, just the bill as submitted was going to take away our ability to do that.
Got it.
It has been modified so that we just have to have a separate notice about that tax category as a separate resolution from our budget.
Got it. Thank you.
So are you saying that we could do it now?
We could do it for next year. And that's it for council comments. We'll move to city manager's comments.
Thank you. I've got three things, and I will try to be brief. The first one is, just in your packets this evening, you've got three documents, one from the Board of Elections, which is a report over the last two-year period from 2012 to 2013, that talks about a number of recommendations and issues that the Board of Elections has undertaken. And as I understand it, the Board of Elections is available. If any council members have any specific questions or want a specific presentation on this, they are ready and available to do that. Secondly, the Safe Roadways Committee has put together a bike share position paper, as well as a snow clearing recommendation, which is also included in your packet. Also, I know from the Safe Roadways Committee that they are interested in coming in and talking a little bit more about some of the recommendations and also answering any specific questions that council members have. So I just wanted to point your attention and make sure that, on the record, that those three items were noted. Secondly, I may just hand it over to the deputy city manager to talk for a second. The county council, or sorry, the county executive submitted his budget in the last two days or so. And obviously, that has implications for the city of Tacoma Park as it relates to municipal tax duplication, payments, as well as some other budget-related issues. And so just wanted for our deputy city manager to give us just a quick overview of some of the initial thoughts from that.
Thank you. I had sent you some links by an email. I did, however, mischaracterize them, so I just wanted to go through and clarify a little bit. The first is on the municipal tax duplication payments. The proposal is to keep it at the same level as there was last year. I will note that the county executive is proposing a 5% increase in his police budget. And, you know, that kind of thing is not reflected in the keeping everything the same. Similar to municipal tax duplication payments are the Tacoma Park Police rebate, which is a formula amount. And that number goes down slightly in this proposal based on the assessable base. I'm a little bit perplexed by this, because in fact, our assessable base went up slightly, very slightly, but still, I don't see why that there's a negative in that. Similarly, the Tacoma Park Library annual payment goes down fairly significantly from the current year, 151,000, to, I'm sorry, I've got the wrong amount. But it's, I'm sorry, they both go up slightly. I just called up the wrong piece of paper. That's why I was confused. Very similar because of the formulas that go through. So in general, we have just about the same numbers as last year. I am concerned, though, that with the information that the mayor gave about the upcoming task force, that we need to make a, think a very strong case about the increases that the county executive is putting in his budget, some of them are quite significant, in areas that we provide services. And so as we go forward in the task force and the follow-up to the task force, we need to make sure that Tacoma Park is appropriately reimbursed for these monies that the taxpayers are paying. So I've just set that up. I would like to note that later this week will be the first opportunity to sign up to speak in the public hearings for the operating budget. And I'll send out the dates for that and see if the mayor's available to testify. But we'll want to make a strong case, I think, at that time. That's all I had.
I've got one more thing. I just want the chief of police to come up and just give a very brief update on some positive news stories that we've had recently.
And I don't know if you noticed, last week was the first week of the new format that we're going to try and do for the weekly reports. One of the highlights of that, and I want to restate it, is a federal case that we were involved in. Actually, had it not been for Tacoma Park Police, we probably wouldn't have made the news, and the federal government wouldn't have either. It involved MS-13 members that were involved in at least three murders and a number of attempted murders, including drug trafficking and some other very, very serious crime in and around the Prince George's, Montgomery, Tacoma Park, and DC area. It resulted in numerous arrests, and it started here. One of the other things I'd like to do is congratulate Sergeant Irwin. He, I've made some promotions last week. It went out publicly, but it's Sergeant Irwin and Sergeant Hotzel are the two new sergeants. And then Corporals Barber, Butler, and Quante are our new corporals. So, you know, every time I get to make a phone call, to call somebody up and tell them they're promoted, which isn't very often here, is really a very pleasant experience. And watching the reactions of the people that get promoted is really worth it. And lastly, there was a carjacking in Chevy Chase, which made the news last week. But what I wanted to do with highlight it, it has probably little to do with us other than the regional issues and maybe some of the same crews that were involved in the cases that we had earlier this year, was the way things worked. And I think that may have been prompted by our community meeting here, our town hall. But it was relayed to me by a county officer that was on the scene of that, K-9 sergeant, that as soon as the carjacking went out and the lookout went out, he was able to go over to the DC channel and broadcast it. And in a very quick and efficient fashion, the duty commander or the commander at DC was able to take that information, requested a case number, and was able to put that into the tag reader system. And then, of course, the stolen carjack vehicle started hitting on the tags, tag readers in the District of Columbia, which resulted in a chase out to Prince George's County, where they unfortunately lost the vehicle that night. The second night, again, it was picked up again, and there was a chase. US Park Police wound up being involved, and it ended in the District of Columbia with five arrests and actually, officer-involved shooting in that one, where they pulled guns on the officers at the time of the bailout. And three of them were shot and two apprehended. So the cooperation between the agencies was very quick and very efficient.
Good to hear.
I'm sorry, Chief, could you just give just a tiny bit more detail? You said that the federal case started here.
Part of it, yeah. I can't get into too much detail on it. But it was really just some good police work on the part of our officers in Tacoma Park that developed some information that led to those cases going federal.
And the arrests didn't happen here, but the?
No.
Okay.
No, the arrest didn't, but it was initiated here by criminal activity that occurred here and then developed.
Okay. Thank you.
Chief, do you expect to name a community policing officer to replace Sergeant Gaskin? I had a query about that from some of my constituents last week.
Not anytime soon, until we get some staffing increases. You know, we have minimum staffing right now on the patrol level. We are, we do have several officers that are on light duty that we're going to get involved in at least coordinating those efforts. We do plan on having the Citizens Academy starting back up. And what I would encourage anybody to do, if they have requests for, you know, community meetings or talks and things like that, they can still send that to me. They can send it to Kathy Plevy, or they can send it to the police email. And we'll get it to the appropriate people, and we'll have people staff those events and do some crime prevention activities. We're not stopping it. We're just pushing it down to the officers that actually patrol the beats as well.
And what is the status of staffing?
Well, we have two in the academy. They haven't, they haven't quit. They haven't flunked out. They're actually doing very well. They're actually doing very well. Usually that first week or two is, is sort of like the SEALs' hell week. I mean, they get yelled at and screamed and abused, and they survived it. We are in the process of one more lateral, and then we are going to be opening up for the, the next position. But we do have three people on light duty right now.
So you have four vacancies and three on light duty?
Well, they're really not four vacancies because the two in the academy are, but, so we have two vacancies and three on light duty.
And you're still searching for a crime analyst?
Yes. We have interviews scheduled. We actually thank Gadsburg City for letting their crime analyst sit on our selection board, so we'll have somebody that actually knows what they're doing and asking the right questions during the selection process and get the best person that we can find. We have some good, good candidates. We have, I think, 10 finalists from about 70 applicants.
So what's the estimate on when that'll be?
I mean, it's an area where, where I have felt the, the department has been slow in the past, is making those decisions.
Yeah, we're not taking nine months like they did the last time. I guarantee that. And if we can get somebody that is somewhat trained, or at least that's their background, you know, that's one step up. I would hope to have it filled within, you know, 30 to 60 days at the most, because we still have to do a background investigation, depending on who the person is. I mean, there, there are some inside candidates as well, but we always, with, with the law enforcement and especially that type of position where they have access to all the information systems, we have to do a full background investigation, and that just takes a little bit more time than, than normal background checks for regular employees. But I expect it to be filled. You know, if we can get the interviews done within the next 30 days, we could probably have it filled no, no later than 60 days.
Thank you.
And if I can just go back for a second to the report distribution, the three reports that we have submitted by council committees, that this is a little bit, we're trying to shift a little bit to a different method for getting reporting back from the committees and commissions so that we get some, the clerk has been soliciting reports. We'll get the reports at meetings, and then based on those reports, if we want to have additional conversations with the committees or commissions, that'll give us the basis for saying yes, we'd like to talk to them. That way, we're kind of catching up on the backlog of hearing from them and having an opportunity to have discussions with the ones where we need it most. And Councilmember Grimes, did you have something on the Safe Roadways?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I'll just make a comment about the bike share station, the Old Tacoma Gazebo Bike Share Station. Thank you, Mr. Patton, for commenting. Safe Roadways representatives for being here, and thank you to the Safe Roadways Committee for having me at the meeting last week. I did ask the committee to look into one question, which is the rules from the State Highway Administration or anyone else regarding the possibility of placing a bike share station in the abstract in what is currently street parking spaces, perhaps expanded a bit by taking out some of the curb that normally is occupied by parking meters and utility poles and so on, so it wouldn't be usable. So I, I hope they'll look into that. We have heard also, I don't know whether the whole council has heard from the Recreation Committee, which voted to recommend the relocation of the Gazebo Bike Share Station because the disruption that the Recreation Committee perceived to the community space use of the Tacoma Junction, I'm sorry, of the gazebo space, given the bike share station there. I don't see any resolution on this question anytime soon, so I wouldn't ask for there to be any discussion of that station anytime soon, but I'm sure we'll come to it eventually. That's, that's my comment.
Okay. Anything else for the city manager and his comments?
No.
Okay. The clerk distributed one set of minutes for February 10th. Has the council had adequate opportunity to review those? Should we take those up tonight, or do you want to delay?
Like to move it?
Yeah, I may move it with one very small change that I sent to the city clerk who's not here tonight. It was just an addition of a word and one thing that I said. I can tell you what it is if anyone cares.
And I sent a small correction also, so I'll second.
Okay.
Well.
So the minutes have been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in approval of the February 10th minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it unanimously. Okay. So we will move to our special session items. First one is the first reading ordinance providing for the 2014 Ward Three Special Is anybody going to say anything about that one?
Just the, the ordinance, the draft ordinance that is in front of you is presented for the first reading, sets forth the details of the special election, including the requirements set out in City Code and Charter, sets forth the location as the Tacoma Park Fire Station, 7201 Carroll Avenue, and the polling place will be in the lower-level multipurpose room. It will be open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Early voting will take place also at the Tacoma Park Community Center at 7500 Maple Avenue, Sunday, April 6th, from noon to 4:00 PM, and on Monday, April 7th, from 4:00 to 8:00 PM. If there's any other questions, I can either try to answer them and/or we can have the clerk provide some answers later on.
Okay. Does somebody want to move the ordinance?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Mail, seconded by Councilmember Siemens. Any further council discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it unanimously. We'll move to the next item, which is first reading ordinance opting out of Chapter 47 vendors of Montgomery County Code and revising the city's vendor code. We have the city attorney here, and he can explain what we're doing.
Good evening. There have been no changes to the proposed ordinance since the work session, but to summarize what we're doing, last summer, the city revised its vendor permit ordinance to facilitate the, the operation of food trucks in the city. And at the time we enacted the ordinance, we did not believe that vendors that were operating on city property, what we're hoping to do is have different vendors rotate through different sites within the city. We didn't think they'd need county vendor permits for each location, which cost $421. And it turns out, the county, under their code, does want us to, or want the vendors to have county permits. So what we're recommending is opting out of the county vendor regulations and, and the only thing we're losing by opting out, we're replacing, which is a liability insurance and indemnification requirement. I guess the, the only other thing is kind of a, an extra layer of protection to make sure that people who are, who are doing different vending activities in the city have some kind of permit in case they don't come to the city first. But I think we can address that by try to coordinate with the county to make sure that anybody who goes there knows to come here for a permit.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Siemens, do you have a question?
Yes, I do. Thank you. So you said the, the only thing this does is opt them out of having to get the permit. So they still have to get the insurance, and they still have to sign the indemnification, and they're still required to have a commercial kitchen as a base, and, or they still required to have the, the same health inspections that would be under the county law.
Yes, I should have added that we, we make it clear that for food trucks, they're still under the county health code and will have to get any health code permits related to operating a food vending operation.
Okay. And that includes the, the requirement of the commercial kitchen base?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Somebody like to move the ordinance?
I'll move it. Second.
Moved by Councilmember Schultz, seconded by Councilmember Mail. Any further council discussion? Councilmember Mail.
Just briefly, I wanted to let my colleagues and the city attorney know that I, I forwarded this issue to the county council and just to, to the three at-large members and the, the councilmember Branson, who we'll see next week, and just to indicate that this is, to the, to the purpose of the nightlife policy that the county council is, is looking at, this is sort of a ridiculous provision of county, council policy, that trucks can't move from one location to another without requiring another $400 permit. So just wanted to mention that I forward that in case there's any, any subsequent county or county staff response.
Did you get any, did you get any response? No, it sounds like.
Just a thank you, we'll look at it, from Councilmember Leventhal.
Of course, Councilmember Reamer is the, sort of the nightlife task force lead, but...
Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it unanimously. And we'll now move to the consent agenda. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we have three items on the consent agenda, a single reading ordinance awarding a contract for compensation and classification study, a single reading ordinance approving high-definition upgrade to city TV equipment, and a resolution providing for appointment to the facade advisory board. Would somebody like to move the consent agenda?
Okay.
Moved by Councilmember Smith, seconded by Councilmember Siemens. Since there are single reading ordinances on the consent agenda, it will require a roll call vote. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Mail?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
So three ayes and three yeses, it's unanimous. And the last item before voting to convene a closed session is a legislative update. Deputy City Manager.
And don't have a whole lot to report. We're down to the final kind of, it's the switch-over time between the Senate and the House and the state legislature. I've received some updates from Michelle Douglas, and at this point, everything's kind of just bouncing around. I think I'll have a whole lot more to say next week. So I, you know, I think a couple bills that we have not been excited about pretty much are, are dead. For example, the AED bill for the police department that would have been an unfunded mandate on us. Some of the stormwater provisions aren't going anywhere that we were concerned about, stormwater control bills. At this point, our alcohol bill is going through with no problem, but there's clearly lots of discussion about marijuana in different categories. I think there's going to be some minor changes in the speed camera legislation. Mayor, do you have some other information of news that are particularly important?
The, the only one that I, that I know that Councilmember Siemens asked me about was the, the archery bill for Montgomery County, and the, as that moved through the process, it got amended so that it was 100 yards instead of 50 yards, and I think it's still working its way through. It had moved out of committee, but it hadn't had its second and third readings.
Okay.
And I did testify for the city on HB 1331, which was the HUR bill at the Appropriations Committee, and the testimony was appreciated. Councilmember Grimes, and then Councilmember Mail.
Yeah, I have one bit on the local investments bill that was initiated by Tacoma Park residents that did pass third reading in the Senate, and it's also passed third reading in the House, which I believe it means it's enacted.
That's...
As long as the bills are the same.
Yes, I believe they are. So those were...
As long as the governor doesn't do something.
Yeah, so those bills would allow for crowdfunding via loans of, of up to $100, cumulatively $100,000 for a business per year, and that's a, that's a good thing. And thank you to the prime person who initiated that, Lord Charcutian.
Councilmember Mail.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I guess I would appreciate a written summary we could share with constituents, given that we do, we have quite a few public sessions about state legislation, and of course, we write things, we endorse positions on legislation. So just the, for the, for the legislation that we've taken a specific position on, either written or testified, I think, you know, having a summary for whether they're still alive or not, I guess. And I just point out the, sort of in the midstream, because in theory, if there, these are issues that are important at Tacoma Park and they're still, still active in the state legislature, then our constituents could actually also speak out on behalf of them. So it's a, it's a good time to get people involved.
I appreciate that. Yeah, a lot of action just happened like earlier today, so I don't have something written for you, but probably within the next couple of days, I will have that for you.
And that's, it's like 10 or 15 bills?
Right, it's not very many.
Yeah, okay.
Anything else?
Before you adjourn, Mr. Mayor, just one point on the, the issue of the high-definition city TV upgrades. I don't know what we do with the, the no longer high-definition equipment that we have, but presumably we have some thousands of dollars of equipment and...
Low definition.
Whether, low definition. Whether that's disposed of in some way that contributes revenue, I was just curious about that, so maybe it's something we could follow up on at a later point.
Well, I can speak to that. There's no disposition of city property that isn't either resold or otherwise have money come back to the city for those things, unless it's completely worthless.
Okay.
And so we have a, a whole process where we have to sign off on each disposition of property.
Okay, great. Thank you.
As opposed to many, many, many years ago, when some cable equipment...
Oh, let's not go there.
So our last item is to vote to convene in closed session, and this is to discuss matters related to collective bargaining negotiations with the city's two collective bargaining units, which are United Federation Confection Workers Local 400 and AFSMI, and the session is closed pursuant to Annotated Code of Maryland State Government Article Section 10-508A9. Following closed session, we'll adjourn for the evening. Would somebody like to move the closed session?
I'll move it.
It's a tie between Councilmember Siemens and Councilmember Schultz. The clerk gets to pick who, who, who moved and who seconded.
I heard Schultz first.
That's because I'm closer. Sound waves gone first.
All those in favor of this, please raise a hand. And that's unanimous, and we are adjourned for the evening. And that's unanimous, and we are adjourned for the evening.
Love it, love it, love it!
How did you get to flipping hip? Was it something in the water? Was it something that they put in the chip dip? Hippee, hippee flip, hippee, hippee flip, hippee, hippee flip, flip. I miss the hip flip. Look so funny, no leopard slacks. Hey, Mr. Hip Flip. You're always dialing to the max. Is there something in your jeans, baby? You know what I mean, just want the facts, Jack. Hippee, hippee flip, hippee, hippee flip, hippee, hippee flip, flip. Now a friend of a friend who was sleeping with a friend of a friend of a friend who was sleeping with a friend, I miss the hip flip. Said I could take you to a party, we could go backstage, it's a brand new show, it's all the rage and it's all in, I miss the hip flip. So I ride to the show like a VIP, now my hat's been a while, then someday we'll be like Mr. Hip Flip. When I went backstage and took a deep breath, to tell you the truth, I was scared to death of meeting my idol, Mr. Hip Flip. So I said to myself, he reached his insomniac, but when I saw Mr. Hip Flip, when I saw Mr. Hip Flip, when I saw Mr. Hip Flip, he wasn't very...
Registrations already underway for Tacoma Park Recreation Department Summer Camp. Find a great camp for your teen, tot, or youth.
They get into, um, get to meet like youth kids every day.
Visit us online for a full listing.
Hey, Mr. Hip Flip. What is it exactly that you do? Mr. Hip Flip. You get paid just for being you. And you say the clever things in all the magazines. In your Dolce &amp; Gabbana, you are bursting at the seams. You're the center of the world and you're Mr. Hip Flip's scene. But I prefer the icon, 'cause I met the real thing, oh, Mr. Hip Flip.
Rent a fire room, only stop, it's haste. Underebberle mit seiner Kinderle, lehrend alle Beis. Underebberle mit seiner Kinderle, lehrend alle Beis.
And every man neither spine nor victory shall live in peace and unafraid. And every woman neither vine nor victory shall live in peace and unafraid. And into flowers she'll beat their swords, nation shall make war no more. And into flowers she'll beat their swords, nation shall make war no more. War no more. No isakoi elkoi cherev, no yemadu od merchamal. 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 We pray for peace. People dying every day, we get stripped of our hopes in so many ways. A brother kills a brother, nation kills a nation, violence kills love. And imagination, violence kills love. And imagination, violence kills. And into flowers she'll beat their swords, nation shall make war no more. No isakoi elkoi cherev, no yemadu od merchamal. We pray for peace. You're my secret blush in the middle of the day. The eggs in my basket, the bats in my belly, baby. You pulled me through the test. But at the end of the day, I still honestly say, you're better than excellent best. Hey, yeah, excellent best. You're my heart bubble bath and my air and my tires, spring in my step and my internal fire. The promise in my pocket, the hope in my chest. And at the end of the day, I still honestly say, you're better than excellent best.
Registrations already underway for Tacoma Park Recreation Department Summer Camp. Find a great camp for your teen, tot, or youth.
They get into, um, get to meet like youth kids every day.
Visit us online for a full listing.
You're my secret blush in the middle of the day. The one who puts up with my crazy ways. The roots, the tree, the bluebird of the nest. And at the end of the day, I still honestly say, you're better than excellent best. Better than excellent best. Hey, yeah, excellent best. Hey, yeah, excellent best. Hey, yeah. I woke up this morning with my head screwed on wrong. Got a piece of paper trying to write down a song. Well, the pen don't work and the paper got torn. So I tried to take a walk, but my shoes were too worn. And then the telephone rang.
Damn thing!
The dog up and died in the weatherman line.
The dog up and died in the weatherman line.
Mister bill collector trying to cause me pain. Steal it from the rich and give it to the rats. He's lying in the pockets of some silver spoon cats. So I tried to drink some coffee, but I started to choke. When I played my guitar, well, even the strings were broke. Then the telephone rang.
Damn thing!
The dog up and died in the weatherman line.
The dog up and died in the weatherman line.
The dog up and died in the weatherman line.
The dog up and died in the weatherman line.
Rocks and sticks, bricks and bones. People frightened in their homes. Well, tell me something that I don't already know. Protest it ties it on the TV show. Well, there's fireside chats, there's pats on the back. There's money on the slide and a belly upright because the telephone rang.
Damn thing!
The dog up and died in the weatherman line.
The dog up and died in the weatherman line.
The dog up and died in the weatherman line.
The dog up and died in the weatherman line.
The dog up and died in the weatherman line.
The dog up and died in the weatherman line.
If I was the mother and you were the child, would you still be the calm one and would I still be wild? Now I'd do anything to give you reason to smile and sing you a simple song for a while. I sing you a simple song for a while. If I was a sailor and you were the sea, would you toss me about or would you engulf me? Would you pull me right down to a watery grave? Rock me to sleep on your sweet loving waves. Rock me to sleep on your sweet loving waves. Parents and children, lovers and friends, hearts that are broken, hearts on the mend. Dreams that are shattered and dreams that take wing. I dream of a sweet song so simple to sing.
Registrations already underway for Tacoma Park Recreation Department Summer Camp. Find a great camp for your teen, tot, or youth.
They get into, um, get to meet like you kids every day.
Visit us online for a full listing.
And you were a star from the vastness of space. Would I see who you are? Would I notice your beauty? Would I bask in your light? Would I sing you a simple song and kiss you goodnight? I sing you a simple song and kiss you goodnight. I sing you a simple song and kiss you goodnight. I sing you a simple song and kiss you goodnight.